Okay, let's call this meeting to order. This is the Allenville County Council Meeting, Thursday night, July 21st, 2022. Going to ask Mr. Bill Ross to give the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. O heavenly Father, we beseech thee as we gather this evening, asking for thy continued guidance with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we partake in the governance of our beloved county. These are all blessings we ask in thy holy and most merciful name we pray. Amen.
We have a forum here. We have two council persons not here. That's Matthew Conley and Carl Gooding. We do have a forum, so we'll continue. Approval of agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's approved then. We have approval of some minutes, May 9th, 19th, and 23rd.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved then. All right, welcome, everybody. Thank y'all for coming out. I want to recognize Dr. Molner. Thank you for coming up from the car. You come and tell us you got plenty of money to give Allenville County?
Tons.
Appreciate that. All right, under public comments, Ms. Ann Rice. Ms. Ann, come on up.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Ms. Ann.
That's good. I spoke to y'all last month about the Smithsonian Traveling Exhibit and Humanities Festival that's going to be here in Allenville, September and October. And tonight, I'm here to ask y'all to be a sponsor for us because we need some extra money for the, some of the events we're putting on. And we're going to have a lot of people coming into the county, and I think the county would want to be listed on the banner as being a substantial sponsor. So I would like to ask y'all to do that.
Any particular amount? Their sponsorship levels or?
They are there on the page I just gave. It was a lot of stuff.
I got so many bills, I've been saying I hadn't looked at any, I'll be honest with you. But let me take a look and see. Okay, thank you. Ms. Ann, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Humanities Festival in Smithsonian, is that two different things or is it all in coherence? Because we got the public, the PR message for the radio station, is that two different events or is it going coinciding? Or is one?
They're coinciding. The Smithsonian Traveling Exhibit will be for six weeks, and it's set up in the atrium. The Humanities Festival is the state Humanities Festival, and we're going to have it the second weekend of traveling exhibit. And we have a lot of special events going on with that.
I read it.
But that's a statewide event.
It was just a little bit confusing. I think maybe we can get a radio with someone else to explain it to people a little bit better.
So, but we will have other events, you know, besides during the festival because we have some speakers in our later in the month and our far traveling exhibit. But the festival, we're really trying to emphasize the good things in Allenville, the start, things in Allenville, all that. We have tours and, you know, special events going on. You've got a list of them last time, and I gave you another one this time. But, you know, I think that we should be having, hopefully we'll have a good turnout for all of it. We want to make a good impression on everybody. So I'm just asking if y'all support it.
We'll talk about it. Thank you, Ms. Ann. Thank you. Anyone else? That's the last one we got. All right, we had the business of Marlon Creech. I don't think Marlon's here, is he? I didn't see him. All right, we'll move on to council reports then. I am Rick Gooding, so I guess I'll do my first and my main report. Merstrategic has just about completed the consolidation study by our law force in Allenville County. You were there today. Danny Blaisruss is going to be here. We're going to wait till next month, and he's going to make a presentation. We're probably going to get together the mayor's council and any elected official who wants to be there, as well as the police department and the newly elected sheriff to talk about the options we're going to have. But that will be next month. I am 99.9% sure. And that's pretty much all I got. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple items I'd like to cover briefly. And I know if you travel 278, 321, and you've noticed a 321, 278 intersection, we're doing a lot of work there. And thanks to Dr. Molner and his leadership, we were able to get that project through. It was on the books unbelievably for 10 or more years. So we finally got it moving, and it's in progress. There's been some concern, and as chairman of the attack committee, I've been contacted by the city and by the citizens in that area, and have spoken with our zoning director, Mr. Mole, about the concerns. We're going to put it in writing. I had hoped to receive that on yesterday, and I did check my email late afternoon. It may be there. And we will send it to SC DOT as well as to the COG so we can at least get them to take a look at it and see if we can do some changes. The main concern right now is the landscaping that's right at the crossing as it bear off to the south towards 321. There's been incidents of vehicles because of the lack of curbing moving into the landscape area. And we hope we can find a solution to that. What's going to happen? You've got new sod, and you have about a dozen of old pine trees, pomeadow trees that's in that area. So you can imagine what happens within the next six months when they up and strong and somebody, for whatever reason, could be a drunk driver, I don't know, just missed that curve and run into those trees. So hopefully, curbing may help. There may be some restriction for his curbing, you know, based on SC DOT slash CSX. But we'll find that out, and certainly we'll report that, you know, based on what we, what we find during the investigation. Very small. We had a similar situation across the track on, I think, 3rd Street there. And we were able to sit down with the contractor, sit down with CSX, and sit down with the SC DOT, and we do have some resolution there. So it's been good for that business that was affected. So it looks like they're willing to sit down with us and try to, you know, reach an agreement. So we hope this, the same will occur for this. Also, back to recreation, Mr. Creech was supposed to be here tonight. I'm not privileged of his concern, but in talking with Laurie, as you know, baseball season is winding up, and we're getting ready to start our football program. And we will be doing something very differently this year in terms of presenting to the community some other sports ideas and possibility, new programming. So just keep, keep posted for that. And lastly, if you notice in the courthouse when we had the reconstruction and renovation of the, of the courthouse, we were gifted by two portraits by Woody and Beth Giddin of Judge Johnson and our cloaked coat, Orlando Ash. At the time, and I think I was the only one of three sitting here that was present during the unveiling of those portrait when it presented to county council. And we did promise to, to install a place of plaque at the portrait. Basically, the plaque will acknowledge the donation by, by the Giddins. So I'm asking council that we go ahead and approve that, just placing those donation plaques. I've spoken with the Giddins, and they certainly would like to see that done. And it needs to be done as soon as we can. So, Mr. Chairman, if I mean all right, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and fulfill the plaque request for the portraits at courthouse.
Oh, couple questions. I mean, why, I know they said they donated that according to the letter that was sent to us back years ago.
Yes.
And do you know why it hadn't been done?
Because councils say we were going to do it, and we never, never actually followed through with it.
So what happened? It was discovered now so late? I mean, I think it should be.
I think it's been brought to our attention, and that's why I'm bringing it back to council.
Because she, her letter said they paid for it. So I wonder what happened to that money? Because it should have been taken, it should have been done.
Yeah. So that's my, my motion.
Second.
Okay, I'll second it.
One question I got to ask, one thing we have never done either. The emergency building over here?
Yeah.
We're going to donate, we dedicated Rodney Stanley.
Yeah.
We're going to put a plaque there. We also never put a plaque at the moor which we named Mr. Riley.
Sure. And we never put a plaque at the airport terminal. So there's a lot of things we, we allow things to.
We all need to get some of that tied up. We got a motion on the floor.
And make sure that we remember that we didn't, whether we have money, the Giddins paid for their plaques now. The other plaques, we need to maybe to discuss further, find out how we're going to come up with it. But they paid for their plaques.
But that's a normal thing for any county facility that you install a plaque.
And again, I know we said that we were going to Rodney, but we never done it. And, you know, but any others, I think that we need to first make sure that the Giddins get theirs up, who already paid for it years first. Please.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
That's passed.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's it.
That's your report?
That's it. Pretty sure.
All right, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, the press and hour committee met last week, Mr. Robinson and I, and we came up with some job descriptions. And we thought that Chesterfield County would be a good one to follow with the exception of, with the hiring and firing of the county employers. We were supposed to bring that to you guys. So I didn't want Mr. Robinson to have it tonight, but that was one thing we met on.
Yes.
And just got some disturbing news tonight from Mr. Goodson. He said he posted on Facebook today, you know, we did advertise, it was on WDOG that Mr. Goodson was resigning as of August 25th, 2022. And his last day would be the 6th. And he briefly told us tonight that he put it on Facebook. I want to wish him well, Mr. Goodson, and we thank you for all that you've done for Allenville County, and that we hope with your, you do well in your future, future year.
Thank you. Council member.
Next, I have, I have some information that I've got from Mr. Our auditor, and I'll pass this down to him, please. I sent you guys an email last week trying to set up a meeting to do, to try to do a budget workshop, and I felt we need that we find out where we stand on the audit. And if you look on the page one, Buddy outlined some information that, that he said he requested back in Q3, 2022, this is June, June. And he said as of now, 7/22, he hadn't got that information. But some of the things that was very alarming we need to work on is the balance, number one, is the balance of 630, 2021 provided supportive documentation and subsequently, subsequent payments for the following: South Carolina retirement withholding and employment portion, the South Carolina police retirement withholding and employment portion, health insurance withholding and employment portion, and others withholding. And number two is they said payroll journals entry for concept HR payroll transaction for the period of 7/1/20 through 6/30/21. Next, third one is providing SC people's insurance statement for June 2020, June 2020 through September 2021. Fourth, it was providing supportive documentation for the following: ACH deposits that was made, posted to the GL. And he had an amount there, it was 317, 2021, $143,339.62. And that had something to do with the FEMA. And number five was providing the transaction, transaction that made up accounts payable at 630, 2021, and subsequently, subsequent payments. Number seven were billing and account receivable being kept for the school's resource officers' reimbursement. You know, that's a grant, that's grant funded. And number eight is the providing supportive documentation for October 2nd, 2020 payment SC DOR total, $19,291.24. That's a government program. Number, these are the ones that just stick out as sore thumb, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody.
This came from Buddy?
Yes. And number 10, the different checks for 45863. I won't say where at, but I can tell you caused a tire door error dated 6/23/2021. The check was written for $12,710, but cleared the bank for only $710. And I guess we need to find out, did the bank correct the error? Number 11, providing supportive documentation for March through May 2021 ACH payment to welfare goals in the total of $6,882.74. I'm not sure what that is. That's, that was another one he had concerns with. And these are, number 13, a detailed general legend for QS1 and Quick Book for the period 7/1/21 to current.
We didn't have Quick Books from 7/1/21, did we, Bill?
Okay. And number 14, all bank reconciliation completed after 6/30/2021. And one of the things that I saw when he sent this email out, said back in, in June the 3rd, 30th, he said that at the bottom of the attorney page, the first page, on the first page, at the bottom, it said, if you have any time, if you have any time available Monday after 2:00 PM, we can schedule a call to discuss the IRS notice. Now, there, there are some concerns that we need to be cleared up, and Buddy had told us if we have any questions pertaining to our audit, that's why our audit has not been finished. He needs this information in order to complete the audit, and our state funds are still being held. So I'm just thinking, guys, we got work to do. And I think Mr. Goodson did tell me that he got some that has been completed, that he will be carrying up there to him.
Some of the stuff you mentioned up there, there are no journal entries in the system. We have no accounting system. They're auditing, they're auditing a year before we even start putting stuff on accounting system. So, you know, we, and it takes time to go back in boxes and pull checks that, deals that were paid. We have the young lady in the admin office doing it, and Ms. Alice has gotten the copies that she needed. So yes, I have a box full of information that'll be delivered then tomorrow.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That's it, boss? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Okay, Mr. Goodson, time for the administrator report.
I think Ms. Taylor probably took some of the air out of my balloon. A lot of people, as I gave my notice on June 6th to county council, my intended notice of resignation, August 5th will be my last day, and I will do everything in my power to get as much done before that day. And I just wanted, as Ms. Taylor duly noted, I did post my letter of resignation dated June 6th on my personal Facebook page. It got out on a, a concern page last week with a lot of comments back and forth, and I've not talked publicly about it. But it's my time, it's obvious I'm departing, it's my time to get the word out myself. So I felt the need. This is my last council meeting, and my letter, I think, kind of speaks for itself. But I've enjoyed working with council. I know a new council's coming in January. I wish the county very much success. And again, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. That's all right. Mr. Sands, Frank, have you had the surgery? Has anyone heard how Walter's doing? Our attorney?
I talked with Walter this morning. And he's mending slowly but well. And he indicated. Yeah, he goes back, I think, next week, and he will feel very strongly that he will be with us next month, so. But he sounds good.
Well, good. That's good news. All right, under new business, we've got a resolution adopting the Allenville County Natural Houses Medication Plan for 2022.
Mr. Chairman?
That's a big thing, yeah.
It's pretty big. I asked Judy to see if she could bind that. It's pretty cumbersome the way it is now. And so that's a report that we're going to have to refer to throughout the year. It's very important. Thank Lois Savannah, the COG for helping us get that report together. But I make a motion that we accept and adopt.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's passed. All right, next, first reading of the ordinance, of the animal control ordinance. Do we need to read through all this whole thing?
No, we don't. We just, just need that from first ads to therefore that, those three small paragraphs.
All right. You want to do that?
Yes, sir. And this is amendment to ordinance number 9374. Whereas Allenville County regulates and controls the ownership and possession of animals within the county of Allenville through the, through the enforcement of ordinance number 9374, known as the Animal Control Ordinance. Whereas Allenville County find it necessary to amend and add to certain section of this ordinance to make it more current and effective. Therefore, the following amendments slash additions shall be included in said ordinance after public notice and readings as required by law. Mr. Chairman, make a motion this constitute the first reading of Animal Control Amendment Ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all right, that's approved too. All right, I guess next is going to be executive session.
I noticed Mr. Creech showed up.
Marlon, you made it?
Yes, sir.
Your watch must be broken.
No, security.
You want to go back? Let's go back. We already missed you, but you want to come back and say something? You got something to say?
I've been very good.
Come on, babe. You doing good?
Yes, sir. I'm doing good. I have a little cancer. All right. Not to waste anybody, too much of anybody's time. Again, here speaking on behalf of County Parks and Recreation, I see that we are striving to make some improvements, which I really do appreciate the council for at least paying close attention to the needs of the County Parks and Recreation. We still definitely need a full staff programmer. Still a little odds and ends as far as our parks. Still trying to keep on the, the really, really, really good volunteers that are desperately giving their time, effort, energy into providing their services for the county. Also, if we can kind of get on a better foot as far as the requisitions or the things that we are asking for, really, really desperately, I want y'all to pay close attention to what we are trying, because we're not, at this point in the program, we're not saying that we want these things. These are the things that we need to have the program operating the way it should be operating.
Marlon, have you had, have your questions, has it been approved or something? Is that what you're saying?
There have been a few little things in the past. Well, right now, I like to just like move forward on to like, right now, we in football season right now. So if helmets need to be conditioned, if shoulder pads, the proper equipment for our kids to be out there performing, or cheerleaders, the way their attire need to be, I think we got the shorts on. I know the light as far as the cheerleaders, uniforms, definitely, footballs, tees, small things as far as the football. But as far, as far as the, the proper equipment, that's very important. We don't want the kids to be out there getting hurt because we don't got the proper chin strap or helmets or shoulder pads, anything like that. Anybody with our kids into the program, you, you want your kids to be protected too as well.
Marlon, let me ask you a question, just out of curiosity. I do it with a bunch of different reg departments in my business, different football leagues. Do we provide, does the county provide like the helmets, shoulder pads for the kids, or do the kids provide their own? What you're saying, we provide it for them?
Yes, sir. Ms. Joy, Ms. Joyner, she been real good about getting, getting information to you guys as far as the helmets and stuff. to you guys as far as the helmets and stuff being reconditioned, or if we need extra shoulder pads, different kids, different sizes, call for different measures, so, she, she has.
Sorry, you go ahead.
I was just gonna ask that, same thing you were, did we, does she send her, we purchase those, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. That helmet should go back every other year, every other year to be reconditioned, I mean, they do.
I think every two years, I'm certain every two years they be reconditioned, so.
Yeah, Laurie has, excuse me, Marlon, but you're right, Laurie generally will put in a requisition when she need to buy additional equipment for the football and our baseball, and I know she have had some concerns about the recreation budget, but we are in a new budget year, so it should not be a major concern at this point.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that we're, he may be held up, that's all I have.
Yes, I have, Marlon, as chairman of the advisory committee, I'm sure you would know if anything being held up, I spoke to Laurie on Tuesday and, and got a summary of things, she didn't indicate at the time she was having problems getting any requisitions or any equipment, but I will check, and I hope you will check, just to make sure.
Right now, right now, I'm in control, I'm sorry, she said that, you know, we entered in the new budget, so right now, she was saying that everything was kind of moving along pretty, pretty great, so, another thing, like, the staff, I think she put a requisition in that she needed at least a program, we do need somebody with some programming experience to actually be out there, be able to operate and program, the actual programs, it'd just be another burden on her or her employee Lexi or whatever, so.
We need, we need, we need to put more funding into that.
Oh, no question. Yeah, we, we've told the recreation advisory committee last time they was here to let us know what we can do, and I think we all know, I've been dealing with recreation for twenty plus years, and we've never funded it the way it should have been.
Yes, sir, I really appreciate it.
And we've never had the volunteers like we always should have, or wish we had.
Yes, sir.
And if you look at Laurie and the number of hours she puts in, we can't pay her for what she does, you know, because she, on average, put in sixty to eighty, ninety hours a week, which is unbelievable, and I'm sure Lexi's probably putting in forty, sixty, you know, during our busy season, so, I hope that sometime you can meet with Councilman Connolly, myself, you know, as chair and vice chair, and kind of give us an in-depth of your concerns, so we can kind of move forward, bring it back to, to full council.
I was just curious, what kind of volunteers you guys getting, are you getting many volunteers that all the parents, I've been talking to Laurie the past couple of years, I mean, it's been a hard time getting moms and dads out to help, do you have many help with the program? I know you do, because I follow you on Facebook, does any other parents get out and help?
It's, it's, it's a good core group, I'd say at least a strong ten, but like.
Takes more than that.
It takes a whole lot more than that, so, that just off the top, the numbers off my head, that we got like real hard down dedicated, they're trying to keep the program afloat, so we never turn down any good help, I mean, it'd be, it'd be great if some of y'all maybe come out, you know, young, not too busy, I don't care if you just catch a game or two, just to support, it take us a long way.
Well, you're right, I agree with you, I've been talking about your baseball season, never gotten a chance to. Well, thanks to cut up, man, I appreciate it.
I really appreciate y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all.
All right, council, I guess that's it, y'all want to go into executive session? Next on the hit list, well, unless you've got something else?
I don't have anything else, I just don't have anything for executive session.
George, rule of branch, list the executive session.
Oh, okay.
Sure, I put in y'all's packet, if y'all see something addressing the chair, I made a mistake on that memo, I put nine one one, it should have been the Jable.
Did I miss something here?
Should be in your packet, in your notes, the letters, I did request when we came before council a couple months ago.
Oh, yeah.
It's in your packet.
The payment, the money that we owe him?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's somebody, I referenced, it was when nine one one was put on him, it was the Jable, it wasn't.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, so my mistake, the letters that he has in there.
Can we just add that to executive session?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure that was.
All right, we need to move to executive, we'll just go.
Yeah, so move.
Second.
All right, all right. Executive session, you want to go into council chair?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Yes, I'd be fine.